I'm all set.
Are you guys ready? Good evening. It's Tuesday, March 12th of 2024. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting. The first item would be the roll call. Clerk Kristin, when you're ready.
Okay. Payton.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Lagaki.
Absent.
Charbello.
Here.
You're lucky. Oh, pardon me. He's absent and excused this evening. Wasnak Scanlon.
Here.
Thank you. Jensen.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Eily.
Here.
Dumacher.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Mijaski.
Absent and excused.
Okay, thank you. So we have three alders absent and excused. We have nine present.
Okay, thank you. And we are certified with compliance in open meeting laws. The first item is public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak. So we'll go right into communications and presentations. Are there any communications from alders? Hearing none, we'll go into the presentations. We have several. And the first one tonight is from the Stoughton Area School District. And Dr. Keizer is here tonight. I'm gonna do the slides. And whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for your indulgence in allowing us to present on the upcoming 2024 operational referendum. To keep myself succinct and on point, I'm gonna be doing a lot of reading from the script here. I do have up on the table here for everyone present, a one pager that talks a little bit more about the operational referendum. And I'll leave that here. And there I can pick up extra copies another day if they're looked over. So good evening. Those of you who don't know me, my name's Dan Keizer. I'm district administrator for the Stoughton Area School District. I'm coming up on my second year here and enjoying the opportunity to continue to meet all the wonderful people that are here in our community. On the next slide here, we wanna start off by breathing a little bit about all the great things that are in our school district. We could spend all evening just talking about the slides. Go to the next slide. Sorry. But we just are gonna spend one slide talking about all the wonderful things that we have in our community. On the next slide, as an additional point of pride, last year in November of 2022, the community generously supported a facilities referendum. This particular referendum was to borrow money to address variety of maintenance and facility needs. The district is currently in the planning and bidding phase of that construction project, which will be completed by fall of 2025. And that the timeline you see up there. On the next slide, our facilities referendum was a referendum to approve debt, which is different than a referendum to increase revenue limits for operational purposes. The 2022 referendum approved an acquisition of debt for facility projects and the associated tax levy to make payments on that debt. An operational referendum, however, is like the one that we're asking for this April, will support additional tax levies to increase the revenue limit for one for day-to-day expenses like salary, benefits, educational programming, and utilities. The last time we went to an operational referendum for the school district was 10 years ago. The district property tax levy is both a debt and operational component. The November 22 debt referendum was timed to coincide with existing debt being paid off. This was to minimize the impact to taxpayers while addressing critical maintenance needs and some modernization of our facilities. We are grateful that we were able to coordinate these timelines so that we don't have to divert operational resources from our classrooms to address critical capital maintenance needs. On the next slide, this April, the district is pursuing an operational referendum to address our budget shortfalls, maintain programs and services, and ongoing improvement work. This referendum also provides some additional staff to support students in their reading and math achievement, as well as mental health. So you might ask yourself on the next slide, why now? The district is facing a significant budget shortfall in the amount of $3.8 million beginning in the 24-25 school year. We will be starting, we will have to start a significant budget reduction process if these shortfalls continue. If the referendum is to pass, the district would avoid these significant cuts while also avoiding interest costs due to the potential need for short-term borrowing. Many districts encounter cash flow shortages at various points during the school year as they do not have enough operational capital to support their month-to-month expenses because their state and tax levies come infrequently. Districts in this situation utilize short-term borrowing to bridge that gap. I'm happy to report that SASD has been proud of its strong fiscal management, and we have been able to avoid doing short-term borrowing. On the next slide, our budget challenges are not new to Wisconsin school districts. We'll spend some time discussing the details around the state funding formula and why the districts across the state, including here in Stoughton, are requesting taxpayer support for operational purposes. The revenue limit is a complex formula that determines the maximum revenue a district is allowed to receive in the form of general state aid and property taxes. The revenue limit is based on an amount per student times a three-year membership average. Revenue limits were started in 1993, and each school district's amount per student is based on the spending levels at that time. So our spending levels today were based on what we did in 1993. The per pupil aid is a set amount per student that is the same for all school districts. That amount increases only if the state approves it or if taxpayers approve an operational referendum. The sum of these two resources typically equals about 85% of our total revenue. Ongoing enrollment declines are a significant budget concern as it means there's less financial support for our operations. Here in Stone, we've been facing a 20-year decline in enrollment. On the next slide, you can see a pie chart that shows that over the past couple of years, our federal resources were a little bit higher than, higher in percentage than what was typical. And this was because of our federal COVID fund relief used to balance our budget. This strategy was adopted when the state directed school districts to use these funds in lieu of increases to the revenue limit and per pupil aid in the 21-23 state budget. The blue and the red sections of the pie chart represent the sources controlled by the revenue limit, the general state aid and property taxes. In the green, you'll see the per pupil aid included, as well as other state revenue. On the expense side, like most school districts, the vast majority of our budget is composed of personnel costs. Balancing a budget with large deficit is nearly impossible to do without impacting staff. We are always working diligently to control costs and save resources when spending, but there are a number of things that are difficult to control. Expenses for things like utility, fuel costs, property and liability insurance, vehicles, general supplies and maintenance have been increasing at a greater percentage than our revenue for several years. However, as part of our fiscal management, we are happy to report that we've been utilizing every resource, internal and external, to make ends meet. We've applied for and been awarded a competitive COPSS grant in the amount of a half million dollars, which has updated our communications to improve communications across all buildings, as well as our first responders. We've been very, very much supported by our financial backers in the community in donations amounting to over $2 million to support renovations such as Collins Field. And we have applied for and been awarded school safety grants to implement digital maps, which we have been able to share with all of our first responders. To date, we've also been awarded over $91,000 in Focus on Energy rebates. We expect those rebates to go up with the increase or the construction due to this 2022 referendum. We've been working with the city, as well as the state, on making sure that we can maximize these Focus on Energy rebates moving forward. As I mentioned earlier, the only way that we can increase the amount we receive per student is if the state approves an increase as part of its annual budget, or if the voters approve an operational referendum. For some years, the state has not increased the per pupil spending at all, let alone keeping pace with inflation. As a result, more and more districts are pursuing referendums. On the next slide here, a study by Forward Analytics states that six of 11 years since 2012, the amount of per student increase in the revenue limit has been zero. In these years, in the years that there were increases, the amount has been the lowest we've seen since 1993, when revenue limits were put in place. Even as we reduce our staff to align to our enrollment declines, it has been nearly impossible to continue providing services to students and keep up with the rising costs without increasing the amount that we receive per student. When you add decline enrollment into the formula, it makes it even more difficult to manage. We greatly appreciate the support the community gave us in 2014 when we passed an operational referendum that allowed us to increase our per pupil amount at that time. Without it, we would have had to do some dramatic reductions in services for our students. However, even with that support, over 10 years without dependable increases at the state level, we are having trouble keeping ahead of our increasing costs. The bars that you see on here represent the number of referendums that were in that year. And the orange line represents the passage rate. On the next slide, to give you added context, in 2023, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau released a report showing the per pupil amount of revenue that would have been received by school districts had we stuck with the inflationary increases that were put in place in 1993. Had those gone as they were in 1993, we would see increases all the way to today. But in '08, '09, change in the law negated the inflationary increase and left it at the control of the state legislature. Under the '09-11 Budget Act, when this law was deleted, the chart shows the effect of what has happened with that removal. To give you orientation, the green bars represent what the inflationary increase per pupil aid at the state level would have been for school districts across the state of Wisconsin. The blue bar represents what actually was approved at the state level for those subsequent years. And as you can see, there are some years where there are no blue bars. If you take those green bars and stack them on top of each other, that's what you would see in the red bar. The cost of eliminating that inflationary increase for this year alone was a decrease in $3,100 per pupil for every student in the state of Wisconsin. To give you context further, in Stoughton itself, for the 2,500 students that we are educating yet this year, that would have been $8.9 million additional state aid coming to the Stoughton Area School District. As the charts early, as the chart was on the previous slide from Forward Analytics, operational referendums have become very commonplace in Wisconsin. In fact, since 1994, 356 school districts put out a total of 1,513 operational referendum questions to voters. Since 1998, the state has seen an average of 56 questions per year. And last year alone, there were 92 questions on ballots across the state. It's estimated that 5.6% of all educational spending is supported by operational referendums. Now, not all operational referendums are the same. There are two types. Non-recurring referendums request a set dollar amount for a specific period of time. When that time expires, the referendum funds go away. A recurring referendum, like the one that we are seeking, provides ongoing, an ongoing increase. Non-recurring referendums are likely to cause a fiscal cliff when those times expire. Unless it is made up by, unless it is made up by increases at the state level, districts are faced with either going back to the taxpayers to renew that non-recurring referendum or reduce services. What you can see here is our representation of per pupil spending in the 1920 school year. The blue bars represent the amount per student. The yellow represents non-recurring referendums in that year for those school districts, and the red represent reoccurring referendums. When there's a reoccurring referendum, the red bar then turns to blue in the subsequent years moving forward. On the next slide, you can see what has happened. If we go back, yep. In this slide, you can see what it looks like in 2024, 23-24. As you can see, several districts have had referendum from 1920 to 23-24 that has moved Stoughton's per pupil limit down to near the bottom. This makes it hard for us to compete with neighboring school districts for resources and attracting and retaining our staff. What's comparable to taxpayers is what the amount of school taxes are paid per thousand or our mill rate. The chart up on the slide right now shows the 1920 school year. You can see that Stone is one of the lowest, even though we were receiving more per pupil aid in the 1920 school year than some of our neighboring districts. If you fast forward to 23-24 on the next slide, you'll see that the mill rate comparison for taxes approved in November of '22. Even with all the referendums, a home in Stoughton is one of the lowest taxes for the same value in Dane County. With all that in mind, districts, the district sent out a community-wide survey to gauge support for a potential referendum. The results were presented to the board in a meeting on January 3rd, and the board voted to approve a question on the April 2nd, 2024 ballot on January 15th. So what will be on the ballot next month? What you see is the ballot language that you'll find. We are asking our community for $4.3 million in the first year and an additional $600,000 for the next three years stepping up. This is a recurring referendum, so if you remember the bar, this would be an additional increase that would be red, that would be added onto our base moving forward. You go to the next slide. The question always asks, what happens if the, if the, or this slide shows an estimated tax increase over the next four years. For our $100,000 home, the amount is about $133 per year. Even with this increase in levy, Stone is still projected to be one of the lowest mill rates in the county. So what happens if the referendum were to fail? The board would need to consider a number of ways to reduce spending in order to balance its budget. The district annually looks for ways to cut costs and stretch its resources as much as possible. At this point, where reduction, the reductions of this magnitude would be significant to our services. We would not be able to reduce $3.8 million without reducing course offerings or laying off staff. To give you further context, kind of give you an idea of what $3.8 million is. $3.8 million is the equivalent, this is not a cut list, but this is just to give you a context of what $3.8 million cost is in our district. So each bullet point represents $3.8 million. We have about 250 teaching staff in our school district. 18% of our teaching staff is equivalent to $3.8 million. All of our educational assistants in our district, $3.8 million is more than, more than all the educational assistance that we have in our district. If we think about all of our assistants and all of our custodians, $3.8 million represents all of the assistants and all of our custodians in our district. We have 14 people who have administrative contracts, including myself. $3.8 million would be all of our administrators, all of our administrative assistants, and four custodians. So that gives you context. So ultimately, this is our community's decision. As a public employee, we are charged with making sure that we put out factual information and answer questions. And we hope that our community goes to the polls on April 2nd to vote for all of our elected positions and provide their input on our referendum question. If you're not sure where to go vote, you can go to the website. And this slide also shows other ways, other places where you can find more information about this referendum. And also, if you have questions, it has Erica Pickett and my contact information so that you can reach out to that. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from council members? Elder Person Payton.
Thank you for coming in, Dr. Keizer. Appreciate the presentation. In the process of the referendum coming up, I haven't had a chance to meet with you or to attend one of the sessions just yet. So maybe this question has been answered. Last year, the board cut 10 FTE due to fiscal responsibility. This year, with the operational referendum, you're adding positions back. How are those, are those related? How does that look for the future?
Yes. It's a great question. The, so last year, when we reduced our 10 FTE, that was making sure that we were aligned to our decline enrollment. The additional positions that we're asking for in this referendum, if it were to pass, are targeted to our long-term goals around literacy, mathematics, and mental health. So we will continue to always align based on student-driven enrollment. That's how we've, that's our philosophy as far as staffing. Not every district bears that same philosophy. Sometimes districts will elect to say, we're gonna allot so much staff for our department area or per level. We've chosen that we want to align our staff based on where our students are enrolling. And at the high school level, it's based on what they sign up for. So if there's more students who are electing to take a certain course, we're gonna staff that course based on that interest, which means that any given year, that may shift. Now, we've committed to, from the boardroom to the classroom, to increase our literacy rates and our math achievement rates. And recognizing that we are still reeling from COVID, even though that could be, hopefully amnesia will take that away from our minds. We recognize that we live in a different world and we have different needs. So we want to make sure that we can provide some staffing targeted in those three areas to address our most critical needs.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
No problem.
To me, it sounds like the state budget and their surplus would have been really nice to have been shared amongst our school districts, but that's just me.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Keizer? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I think next we're gonna have field representative for Congressman Mark Buchanan, Morgan Solly, come up and introduce herself. And then we'll get Jimmy Anderson on deck.
Okay. Hi, y'all. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Morgan Solly, for those of you who don't know me. And I'm a field representative for Congressman Buchanan's office. I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, but I did want to come and just talk about a few things. Main purpose is to just introduce myself, especially to those of you who don't know me. I've met a few of you. So to those of you that I've met, hello again. And to those of you who don't know me, hi. And yeah, I just wanted to put a face to a name and also talk a bit about the direct impact that our office can make for all of you and your constituents. So the first thing that our office does that I like to talk about is casework. So constituent services work where our, so our casework team serves as a liaison between a constituent and a federal agency. So if a constituent is having any issues or concerns with a federal agency, that's where our office can step in and assist folks, similarly how you might do your job just on a federal level. And so that's the first thing that our office provides. Just about every staffer in our district office does casework, including myself. And so that's something that we really value and are here to help our constituents with. The second thing would be that the congressman can write letters of support for federal project funding. So if there's ever a federal grant that you may need a letter of support for, that could be something that our office could provide. Next, our office can also look into potential government, federal government grant opportunities. So if you have an idea for something, but you don't necessarily know what grants are out there, that's something that our office can look into, mainly with our Congressional Research Service, which is a really handy thing that our office has at our disposal. You take a look at what might be available for the specific type of project that you have. So if you know what grant you need, that's where a support lawyer could come in. But if you don't know what kind of grant you might need, that's where we can come in and do some research for you. And then lastly, myself and the rest of my team in the district office are in frequent contact with the congressman to ensure that any community needs are communicated directly to Mark. So if there are ever any community needs, feel free to reach out to me. I do have business cards, which have my contact specifically and also our website. If there's more of like a general concern or you want to refer someone to us for a federal issue, our website's a great place to start. But yeah, I just wanted to pass out some business cards. Feel free to get in contact directly with me. I'm here to support you all. And yeah, that's all I have for you. I told you it'd be a little bit short. But yeah, happy to answer any questions if you have any of that, or I'll just leave some business cards and feel free to reach out at any point.
Any questions for Morgan? Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're gonna introduce Jimmy Anderson next. So just give us a moment to set up.
I knew they installed this future-wide wheelchair for a reason, right? To be able to give these kind of speeches. I particularly like doing this whenever I'm around my friends that are five foot three and shorter, so I can finally feel taller than somebody. But I, I'm Representative Jimmy Anderson. I am gonna be running for the Senate district that includes Stoughton, amongst many other new towns, villages, and cities. And so I wanted to make an effort to kind of go and get to know the people that are actually on the ground doing the hard work. And that's all of you and the local government work. So I also want to apologize that we did not use the state surplus in order to help our schools be able to make those budget shortfalls. And that's been something that, something I've been very passionate about and fighting for in the legislature. But hopefully in the future, with a little bit more even control in the legislature, my hope that we'll be able to kind of get those things done. But
But mainly I just wanted to introduce you, introduce myself to you all. And I'll be sitting back there if you have any questions or concerns or anything you want to raise and be happy to talk about it.
All right, thank you for being here. Any questions for Jimmy? Appreciate you running.
Thank you so much for having me. He wheeled. That's right.
All right, next up, we're Stoughton Community, Stoughton Area Community Foundation is here to give us an update and we have two of their finest.
Thank you. Stoughton Area Community Foundation, about a year ago, we were pleased to be awarded some ARPA money from you folks to further enhance the work that's being done with the community. We thought it was important about halfway through this process, our grant year. To give you a quick update, Randy Olson has been very instrumental in putting together this slide presentation. So we'll just be real brief on it. So it's, we're in our 26th year. The next slide talks about our number one priority is making Stoughton better. The board is shown on the next slide. And again, I believe all of you have this at home that you can look at and review. I do want to spend just a moment on the grant request, the next slide. Which indicates the total amount of grants that requested from us, how many we were able to cover out of the amount, the 100,000 that was given and the 55,000 that we were able to put forward. The decision was made last year and I think it was a good one to separate the two out. So we have two big lists of grant recipients, those that got the 100,000 dollars for the ARPA and then the other ones that we titled just simply as improvement fund request. You can see the percentages there. And again, I'm not going to dwell on them, but we were able to fulfill quite a few of the requests. The next slide. So this again, it's impossible to go through all of this and read through them, but you have them as your packet. List all the different groups, the description, the people responsible for it, the title of it. And we also went as far to see when we were selecting these, if we were fairly balanced in how many we gave out to youth or families or special needs or other areas, education, historic arts, just to kind of hopefully have a good representation. And that was a real highlight that there was a lot of diversity with the applicants and what we were able to grant. The next one, next slide is the 100,000. So these were the groups that were selected and the programs that they have. Furthermore, the next slide, we want to highlight the fact that we realized in doing this that we probably had to step up our game on our application, that we invested some dollars and quite a few hours to make sure that our application procedure, that people could submit their updates to us as well as communicate with us with pictures that they have. And this would be a good time to tell everybody, April 16th will be our celebration event. We've rented the Chorus House. We're going to have a half a table there for each group to come in and put information down that they have, answer any questions. We'll have some refreshments. We have just a very brief annual meeting that the foundation has. But we, we want to make sure that all the groups, since we have to do good reporting, Dave, I know you're listening from the city. We want to make sure that all the groups are actively carrying out what their plans are, keeping the receipts, getting them submitted as soon as possible. And we're very pleased that several groups have already indicated that they will attend and that they're on top of it and it's moving forward. So we thought we should just include a slide about that and the next page to reiterate, anything you want to add?
You know, the, the new procedures that we put in place with our system, it was really about follow-up and making sure that A, you get feedback on the ARPA so you know the money's going where it's supposed to and it's being spent in the appropriate way. So we spent some time on that. As of today, we've already have 12 entities who already supplied partial or full reports back. So we're well on our way to get this down the road for you.
And that would be, the entire list was 39 different groups got some of the money. So we've got a ways to go, but we also have three different board members that are committed to making phone calls with these groups. We, we don't want to leave this as a last minute thing to move forward as this grant cycle completes itself in August. And we start the new cycle in September 15th with applications for next year, which is part of your decision-making if you're going to work with us again or you want us to help with that again. The next many slides, if you just go to the next one, each group is highlighted. We decided instead of trying to put it in our own words or make it as representative, we used it right off of their application, exactly what they were going to use the money for and the description. And it's just a whole plethora of different things that are out there. And I know it's not something that everybody's going to sit down and read, but we thought it was critical that you as a group are making decisions. If again, you want to designate some ARPA money in the upcoming year, you've got a better idea of how it's getting out in the community and how it's being used. So I, I will entertain any questions? Anything else you think important to add at this point? Questions? Well, enjoy reading and let us know for how things, how things go. But we're, we're very excited about how it's all come together. And we're going to celebrate April 16th at the Chorus House. You'll see more details as they come up.
All right, thank you so much for everything you're doing. President Hirsch has a question for you.
No, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for your presentation and for distributing the money. It was, it's great. It's, you know, I think you guys did a great job and I see that there's a great benefit to a lot of our community members. So thank you for all that you do.
Well, you're welcome. It's, it was a, it became a tall task, but I give a lot of credit to our board members who stepped up in a lot of different ways to review all the applications. We had well over 50 applications. And also to Isidex who helped with all the technology to make it all work. And now we need to just do some of the final steps for this year. So thank you again. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. All right, before we do the next presentation, I just want to take a moment and have Chris come up and introduce herself. As long as we're going to be talking about TIF tonight, we might as well introduce you and introduce you to TIF in the city of Stoughton.
Hi, so I'm Chris Muntz-Pritchard. I'm the new planning director. I just wanted to say hi and so you guys knew who I am. Feel free to reach out. I am only been here a week, so I can't, I can't answer as many questions as I had hoped at this point, but.
She's doing great.
Welcome, welcome to our city.
Thank you.
Welcome and good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and I think what I'd like to do is vote on the consent agenda quick and then we'll get into the presentation from elders and then lead right into the TIF discussion. Trying to be efficient, we'll see if it works out. So we have a few items in the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion by Jensen, a second by Payton. Any discussion or anything acted on separately in the consent agenda?
I have one, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, in R 27, 2024, in the second, whereas I think the, it has the Public Safety Committee met and passed hence at a future date. So I think just to change that date.
All right, did you catch that candy?
I don't know what date.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what date they, they actually met, but.
It was reviewed at the last Public Safety meeting.
All right.
Yep. On the 28th.
Yeah, just that date changed, that's all.
All right. Thank you for that. Anything else? With that change, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, Dave Ferris, are you ready?
Always ready, Mayor.
Well, I hope I am. I'm going to advance the slides for you.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here to be able to present the project plans to you. We've been working on these quite a while and I know you have definitely heard quite a bit about a couple of these TIF districts over the last year or so. So I understand you, you have a pretty good understanding what these TIFs are about. And I will try to basically do a high-level introduction of the project plans. I'm going to use the presentation as my method to kind of go through those so that we're not weeding through the documents. But if you had the chance to read through them and there's things that I don't cover, please make sure you point to where that is in the project plan and we can definitely, either myself or staff can, can answer that for you. So once you, okay. Do you want, do you want me to go through this, Mayor, or do we want to just keep going?
I'll leave that up to the council. How quickly or how slowly would you like him to go through this stuff? Some of it you've already seen before.
I don't, I didn't know if somebody wanted a TIF 101 class or if everybody's kind of.
Give us the Reader's Digest version of it, we'll blow through it.
I'll, I'll use the, the Stoughton Trailers TIF as, as an example here just because it's, it's a little bit, a little bit cleaner than the downtown TIF. But you know, if the property out where, if the property that's out where the Stoughton Trailers TIF is, is really, has a certain value to it. And that is this blue section that you can see on the screen. And that's, that's really the value that all the taxing districts have the ability to tax on going forward. That's all they'll be able to tax on. And as that, that project goes forward, that's kind of where that purple section starts to grow. And as the, as the value gets put into the ground and gets assessed, you know, the value from those, those improvements will be multiplied basically by the full tax rate. So the TIF will collect the full tax, tax increment that would be above the base value. And that'll be used to pay for some of the improvements in that district as well as municipal revenue obligations. So once we get to a point where we've collected everything that we need to pay off our obligations, which would be either the municipal revenue obligations or the debt that's related to the state Highway 51 improvements, at that point, we can close the district and that would be the line between the purple, blue, and green. At that time, basically it would go back onto the tax roll unless the city decides to go down the affordable housing extension. And it's possible that you have, you know, at least a year where you can collect an increment to go towards that type of an activity. Once the district has been closed out, the value then goes on to the tax roll for all the taxing entities that, that tax your, your residents and, and they collect the, the taxes for the, you know, their portion of that value that's been put on the ground. That's kind of a quick and dirty of that. Any questions on that? Okay. So we'll move into TIF 10. I just want to give kind of a quick update of how we got here first. We did have a meeting with the Joint Review Board on February 12th. The Joint Review Board did not actually ask any questions on either of the TIF project plans. They listened. They're, they're ready to, to meet with us if you decide to consider these two TIF districts and, and, and put their hopefully approval on that as well, which will be on March 25th, I believe, 26th. We then went to the Plan Commission that same day, the February 12th. The Plan Commission on TID 10, or the, the public comments on TID 10, really, there were some people that were very interested on how they could potentially get assistance from the TID in the future. One property owner was, was interested in, you know, how it was determined that the properties were in need of rehab. There was one person that was very much encouraging, keeping going with solutions for downtown parking. And then another person just, just wanted to know what the, what the potential, how, how they could actually go about applying or getting eligible for assistance. As far as planning commission comments on TID 10, you know, why are the boundaries shaped the way they are? And when we actually look at, at some of the maps here in a little bit, you'll see that, you know, it definitely meanders around a little bit. And then also, let's see, is there a way for us to increase the allocation for parking? Right now, there's, there's a potential $50,000 that will probably be used towards, towards a study. But that's something that they were interested on whether or not there was a way to increase funding to maybe help with the parking. So the, the vote on TID 10, as far as recommended to the city council was five to nothing. And so I'll just jump into the rest of, of TID 10 then. So can you pop back one? Okay, so the purpose of the district really is to fund development incentives. And there's some, there's some public infrastructure improvements that can be used to promote rehabilitation of the existing downtown properties. This is a rehabilitation and conservation district, which means that it can be open for 27 years. And there's one finding that needs to be determined when you're, when you're creating this district. It's not less than 50% by area is in need of rehabilitation or conservation. We actually have a chart on page 13 of the project plan that documents that staff had kind of gone out and looked at, you know, what properties could use some rehabilitation of some sort. And, and what was determined is about 59% of the properties within the district were in need of some type of rehabilitation. Gary and other staff, if you want to hop in, just kind of give me some kind of a high sign and I'll, I'll let you jump in. Otherwise, I'll just keep going. Next slide. Okay, do you want to talk? Gary, did you want to talk?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Sure. So on this chart here, we, we have basically the boundaries of the TIF and the, the colored areas are the, are the properties that were determined to be in need of real, real ability, rehabilitation. If you want to see a list of all the parcels that are in the district, page 12 and 13 have the listing of each parcel that was out there and whether it was in need of rehabilitation. Next slide. This is a required map for the Department of Revenue. What they want to see is because we're actually overlaying this district on top of, of part of TID 4, they want to see where the new district fits in, in comparison to where the original TID 4 is. Next slide. This is actually a slide and I have to take off my glasses to read it. But this is a slide that kind of talks about the improvements that will be made. And I'm going to go to my version here because that's really tiny on the screen and I'm sure you can't see it either. But what we have is on the north side of, of the, on the top side of the map, we have the 211 Water Street, which I believe you've received a, a report from our elders, pro forma people that talked about whether or not the, the property met some of the, the tests as far as the BUT 4 test. Did the property need to have TIF assistance? And so this is one where it was vetted for the BUT 4, that this property definitely would require TIF to actually get off the ground and actually do their project. So there's some rehabilitation, rehabilitation that will happen at that site. Otherwise, there are, there's funding set aside in the project plan, which would be something that you'd consider on an individual basis, like you did with 211, to do other municipal revenue obligations if those, those people that come forward actually can fit the, the BUT 4 test. There's also an electric and water lateral upgrade, upgrade program that you'll see in the project list, as well as I think that all the dollar signs in here are just potential areas that could get some of the, the development grants that we have. Next slide. So the listing of projects is we have the 211 Water Street, which you have had, had vetted. And, and there's a development agreement that I believe is either going forward to, or going to you today or, or pretty soon. That's the one you've seen. The other ones will come to you on a case-by-case basis and you'll consider those individually when they do. The water lateral and electric service line upgrade program has 250,000 set aside to help those programs. There is a potential for setting up a rehab and conservation revolving loan fund in the future. The mixed-use parking solutions is, is what I brought up earlier with the $50,000 that, you know, will, will be going towards either a study or, or, you know, if there's something left, maybe it could go towards some projects. But it's something that, you know, you're contemplating this in the project plan. And if there is funding, it's possible that you could allocate more towards that. The, the key with the Department of Revenue is, is that we contemplate that kind of, of an item. of an item, and so this is this uh, definition here is, is broad enough that you might be able to, to add more project cost to that, because you've contemplated doing some solutions there, but at this point, there's fifty thousand set aside. Otherwise, there's just, uh, interest on the, on the debt that would pay for um, the water, I believe it's the water lateral, uh, projects, um, as well as, um, uh, some financing costs associated with that borrowing. And also, there'd be some administrative costs on an ongoing basis that would be paid for. The next slide actually has some of the the uh, potential development assumptions. The two eleven Water Street is a, a number that is, has been vetted. The other ones are, are more place mark, placeholders for things that that could be contemplated in, in the downtown, uh, rehab for the hotels, some some rehab for floors, upper floors that may be in need of some improvements, so they can be used for a purpose and and not remain vacant. Um, and then, uh, one other rehab that's a little farther down the road, but uh, some of these are basically placeholders on things that we would hope that would get, you know, have some uh, traction and and get done to help rehab some of the downtown property. The next schedule is the, a really tiny schedule once again. Um, as you can see, there's uh, tax increment that we, we can generate if all of those projects on that last um, schedule were to come true, we'd have about four point two million dollars of tax increment that we could use towards uh, things like, uh, municipal revenue obligations for two eleven water, um, other municipal revenue obligations that might come forward. Um, some capital projects, potential revolving loan funds, some administration, based on, you know, how we, you know, how the, the, the development occurs, you know, with the assumptions that we have, if they were actually to happen the way they're set up, now, we project that this district would probably remain open for its entire life. I think that's all I have as far as these schedules go. Gary or, or Mayor, or uh, anyone wanna add on to anything that I've said with TID ten?
I do have a, a comment to add, and that are in discussions with staff today, the idea of, of the water and electric upgrade program should be uh, perhaps broaden to be utilities in general.
Okay.
In that, uh, there could be, uh, a, a need for some sewer upgrades on some properties and, um, uh, and other, uh, types of utility-related work, um, uh, might be included, so with the council's approval, I'd like to make that adjustment to the budget.
Gary, did you call it just the utility upgrade program, then?
Yeah, utilities upgrade.
I can make that change.
Is that something we'll have to we'll have to amend when we do the motion?
Yeah, that would need to be included in the motion, uh, to approve.
Yeah, I think that the idea is to make it more broad in case there's other things, as Gary mentioned, like sewer um, that comes up, could be stormwater, not real likely downtown, but we just wanna cover all of our bases in case something else comes up in that area that we wanna possibly allocate money toward. And then as far as the TID ten, um, you know, we continue to work through with the developers on various steps on their project. We're at Plan Commission last night, and we moved a couple other things forward, um, so you'll be seeing some things coming to here related to that as well as the developer's agreement. Anything you wanna add, Rick?
Uh, not at the moment. I mean, ba- basically, just the eleven Water Street project, or going through the process on that one. There are just a few issues we have to work out, um, but we're moving along on that, and it should be, we should have some things for council here in the near future.
And after the public hearing at the Plan Commission meeting, um, we did follow up, uh, reach out to those business owners that attended there and some others that we think might be interested. Um, so Katrina Becker and I went out and and met a couple this week and a couple last week um, to really understand their projects and whether or not they'll qualify. Um, and we'll continue, you know, to do that with other businesses as well, so you know, we've been making the rounds anyway, so we, we think there's gonna be good participation. Any questions on ten before we go to eleven? Uh, other person Reeves?
Um, I don't know if you're free to talk about it. Is someone considering a hotel, then? Downtown?
When we refer to the hotel, we're referring to a building that was a hotel back in the day, and the second and third floor is empty, so um, they wanna do a project for sure on the main floor, and they'd like to someday do the project on the second and third floor, and this might be um, an opportunity for them to do that sooner than later. Other questions on ten before we go to TID eleven? Okay, Dave.
Um, just another introduction of, of, uh, what has transpired. So as far as TID eleven, um, like I said, the Joint Review Board on February twelfth did not have any comments at all. Uh, as far as TID eleven at the public hearing, there were no public comments on TID eleven. And really, from the planning commission, there really wasn't any questions about the project plan or the TID creation. Uh, there were some comments about whether the TID would include a roundabout. Um, and also, you know, when the occupancy for the, the Stoughton Trailers uh, headquarters might occur. Uh, that, that resolution was also passed five oh by the Plan Commission to recommend uh, creation to the city. So going into TID eleven, uh, you know, the BUT four is once again something that I think you've, you've heard quite a bit from my cohort, Keith Dahl. Um, uh, he's, he spends a bunch of, a bunch of time, uh, answering questions and running numbers um, with the BUT four as far as whether TIF was needed to to be used with, with the developer in TID eleven. And so, you know, the purpose of this district really is to provide those development incentives, plus a little bit of public infrastructure that has to do with the US fifty-one uh, improvements that are going along the highway in the half-mile area of the TID. Uh, this is actually a mixed-use TIF district, which has a, a maximum life of twenty years. There's a couple of findings that have to be satisfied as far as the um, this type of district, one fifty percent by area is suitable for mixed-use development. Uh, on page ten of the actual project plan, you'll see that we were able to document that fifty-seven percent is suitable for mixed use, and and so that meets that criteria. The other item is the thirty-five percent by area is suitable for newly-platted residential, um, and you cannot, can't go above that. And with the calculation that we have on page ten, uh, we're coming out to about twenty-four percent based on the uh, the use map that was provided to us that we use to document that. Next page. Uh, the improvements in here, really, I'm, I'm gonna actually go to something I can see a little bit better. Um, as I said, there's a couple improvements down the US Highway fifty-one corridor. Um, you know, as far as, uh, I believe it's, uh, bike, bike pedestrian underpasses and trails. Um, and let's see, otherwise, it's municipal revenue obligations. Gary, I feel like I'm missing something as far as those improvements. It isn't just the
sidewalks and lights.
Okay, sidewalks and lights, okay, so. Um, so that's really the project costs or the projects that are part of this district. Uh, next slide. This is really the map that we were able to, to do the percentage of, of mixed use as well as the uh, newly-platted, and and I think Gary had quite a bit of fun uh, measuring out some of this to come up with the, the percentages for us, so uh, this is really the, the use map that we use for that, for the future use of the property. Here is the project list. As I talked about, we have, uh, infrastructure. Some of that project is actually going to be paid for by TID number nine. Um, so what you'll see is the total project cost is about two million dollars. We expect to, TID number nine to pay for about seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which leaves about one point two million dollars or one point three million dollars of project costs that will be in the half-mile area of TID number eleven here, so that will be, um, borrowed for with the tax exempt, uh, borrowing to pay for the improvements. Uh, the other item that you've had a, a lot of exposure to is the municipal revenue obligations for for phase one and phase two. Um, and those are really the, the biggest items in here as far as uh, the project cost. Otherwise, there's some interest on that debt to pay for the the, uh, public improvements and then, uh, the ongoing planning and administration that we'd have. Excellent. Uh, this is development assumptions that were provided by the company. Um, uh, these are items that, that Keith Dahl used in his analysis, and so these are, you, they should be somewhat familiar to you based on his analysis. There's about a hundred and fifty-two million of potential development in here. And if you wanna go on to the next slide, that translates into about forty-two million dollars of tax increment based on today's tax rate. Um, and if those values actually come in when they do. Uh, otherwise, we have debt service payments that are, are based on that, uh, public improvements. You can see the breakout of the MROs that were related to what Keith put together. Um, the capital cost of the improvements, some administration. And once again, uh, you know, it, the way that the number shook out, we probably do not uh, close out until the last year of the district. Think that's all I have on that. The, the next slide really, it shows you that we, what we talked about before with the, the calendar, we had the Joint Review Board and Plan and Commission on the twelfth for here with you, uh, to have you consider whether or not you wanna approve the TIF districts. And if you do that, you know, today would be the day that they're actually created. The state will use today's date as the creation date. The Joint Review Board does consider it and has to, has to, um, bless it, basically. Um, and, and we're hoping that, you know, if, if you consider it, that they are on board with with these projects being something good for Stoughton, so that would be on March twenty-sixth, that will uh, potentially take that to them. Any questions on TID eleven?
Any questions from council members?
Or any comments by staff? Add on to what I said.
Looks like you covered it. Alright.
Hope I did a good job.
Yeah. We've been talking about this one for a while, so you probably have it down by now.
Yeah.
Alright. So that leads us into new business. Uh, the first one is R twenty-eight of twenty twenty-four. And this went through the Plan Commission, and this is the one that if you, if you wanted to consider, um, the resolution, we'd wanna add some language in there for the utility section. All, all the person Caravalo.
This is R twenty-eight of twenty twenty-four. Resolution creating tax incremental district number ten, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries city of Stoughton, Wisconsin. And I so move with the recommended amendments to the to the resolution. Including the, what are we calling it? The utility infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, um, do we have adding that num, that line that the motion should include the amendment to the utility plan? Do we have a, an actual number that we're assigning to that, or like a?
I don't know if we're changing the number other than expanding the eligibility.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is that how you understood it, Gary?
Yes, it's just the name, the name of the, of the budget line item. The number doesn't change, just the name of it.
Yes, then just the name change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Any questions or comments? Anything you wanna cover on this one? Other person Caravalo. Everyone's familiar with the okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed? That one carries. R twenty-nine is the next one. Other person Caravalo.
And this is R twenty-nine of twenty twenty-four, resolution creating tax incremental district number eleven. Approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries, city of Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Your second.
Second?
Second by Peyton. Other person Caravalo. Anything you wanna elaborate on in this one?
I think we're all pretty familiar with this one, so I have nothing to add.
Alright. Anybody else? Other person Reeves?
Just a question. So by approving the resolution, it doesn't matter that we don't have the developer's agreement, or we don't really have a specific project planned for phase two. Just wanna be clear about what we're approving, so I understand, please.
By adopting the resolution, you're approving the creation of the district. You don't need to have the development agreement in place. And actually, approving the district doesn't authorize doing a, anything until you take subsequent action to actually approve the development agreement.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Anything else? Some of the Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Okay, the next one, two, three items are coming from Stoughton Utilities. Other person Peyton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so Resolution thirty of twenty twenty-four authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the write-off of Stoughton Utilities delinquent account balances and invoices deemed uncollectible as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, Brian Hoops is also here, so if you have any other questions, or Brian, would you like to elaborate?
Alright, and that's a motion.
And I so move.
Is there a second? Second by Johnson. Alright, uh, go ahead, Brian.
So this is an annual, um, agenda item that we bring to you each year. Um, this year is slightly higher than in some past years, and the reason for that is because in twenty twenty-three for write-offs in twenty twenty-two, we did not submit any of the um, AR invoices, um, such as the damage services, et cetera. That's on the list. Um, but other than that, this is a pretty routine, um, take, and the dollar amounts are not out of line.
Alright, thank you for that. Thank you for being here. Any questions on that? No questions from the Alders? All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Uh, next item is R thirty-one. Other person Peyton.
Yes, thank you. Um, Resolution thirty-one of twenty twenty-four, authorizing the release of easement rights to a platted utility easement on lot one of Certified Survey Map number one three eight seven eight, recorded as document number five one one nine two zero zero. I so move.
And is there a second? Second by other person Johnson. Other person Peyton.
So this, um, easement, um, authorization of a release of easement is related to the hospital. Um, the second one also is related to the hospital expansion. Um, for more detail, I would turn over to Brian Hoops.
In both, excuse me, in both cases, um, the hospital is relocating the existing water and sanitary sewer infrastructure. Uh, they're installing new along a new easement that's being granted to us, and as a result, the existing easements are no longer needed.
Alright, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, and R thirty-two is the last one. Other person Peyton.
Alright, Resolution thirty-two of twenty twenty-four, authorizing the release of easement rights to a platted utility easement on lot one. The Certified, Certified Survey Map number one six three four one, recorded as document number five nine two zero five two nine. I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by other person Butler. Other person Peyton.
This is just same as the previous one, but in a slightly different location on the same plotted utility lot.
Alright. Anything you wanna add, Brian? Any questions or comments on this one? Other person Schumacher.
Brian, I did have one question. As the hospital is going to, they don't need that easement in there, and, uh, they're going to vacate the piping. Are they gonna leave that in the ground, or they, is that gonna be dug up as a result of construction?
Um, most likely it's gonna be dug up as a result of construction. Uh, the new, uh, clinic expansion is basically being, um, built directly over these easements.
That, that's what I was thinking, but.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Brian. Alright, next. One, two, three, three items are coming from finance. What happened here? Other person. person Schumacher.
All right. Our thirty-three of twenty-twenty-four is the Resolution to Amend the twenty-twenty-three adopted budget for departmental deficits and expenditures exceeding budgetary authority. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. All the person Schumacher.
Because of some circumstances throughout the year, some of the departments went over on the, what we had allotted in the budgets. Those are detailed in the tables attached onto this resolution. And as kind of a stopgap for it, in the last meeting, we talked about doing a little bit more closer to like real-time budgeting and how we'll prevent this from ballooning up like it did for this one, by just doing different reporting structure.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Ellinger?
No, I don't believe so. Just high level. You've got two different scenarios. Number one, some departments exceeded their allowed expenditures. We're increasing the budget to account for that, so we stay within statutes. And number two, for those departments that had a deficit, we are increasing their budget so that they came out at a zero for the year.
And so far, I've met with two of the three department heads that had the biggest discrepancy. And we're looking at putting in some measures to, as all the person Schumacher said. So for example, we're looking at doing monthly reporting and meetings to talk about it, which we're going to go over at our next leadership meeting, which is coming up in the next couple of weeks. Trying to utilize separate software systems and make them speak to each other. So we're talking to IT to see whether or not that's a possibility to eliminate some mistakes and make it easier for tracking is another one. And as Brett mentioned, really doing more real-time budgeting instead of waiting till the year is over and then discovering that we're, we're not where we want to be. So those are a few examples of things that have come up. I'm sure there'll be more as we continue our conversations. Any questions or comments on this one? All the person Reeves.
Forgot to ask this in Finance, and I'm not on the Opera House Committee anymore, but I do remember that one of the challenges they had was their season is different than our, than our fiscal year. So I was just curious if that's any part of the conversation, or maybe that's not possible, but.
From my perspective, we've had that conversation in the past, and then really doesn't change the bottom line at the end of the day. And they do, you know, report out monthly at the Opera House Board, which you know, because you're on it. But I think there's some things that we can do maybe earlier on in the process, maybe when we're booking shows. We can, you know, do some more calculations on the front end, or at least review our projections throughout the process when the shows are going on and things like that. I don't know if there's anything from your perspective, Dave.
Having separate financial reports for a calendar year and a fiscal year or a season year creates more work for the departments. They're doing two sets of reports.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's something we can revisit. We had done that with previous Finance Director. We can look at that again. We were fortunate enough that we do have a volunteer on the board that does some of that work. But if it's creating more work in the Finance Department, I think that's probably something that'll come up when we have a meeting with, with the Opera House. I'm meeting with them tomorrow. And then once I gather some information, I'm communicating that with Director Ellinger. And then we plan on doing follow-up visits, visits to the departments to actually implement the ideas and strategies that we want to do. So I think we'll have further discussion on that particular point. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. The next one is our thirty-four. All the person Schumacher.
All right. This is our thirty-four of twenty-twenty-four, which I noticed in the header on that, it has a triple X in there. So just to add the thirty-four into that header on this one. This is a resolution to carry forward from twenty-twenty-three budget to twenty-twenty-four budget for capital. So move.
Is there a second? Second by Wasneek Scanlon. All the person Schumacher.
This is another one that's got a number of tables attached in there to go through by department and by fund, where these carryovers are coming from. A lot of them related to construction projects, vehicles, equipment, stuff like that.
Anything you want to add on this one, Director Ellinger?
This is something new for council. My understanding is, past years, these capital items were discussed at a Finance Committee meeting and given approval at that level. But Finance Committee doesn't have the budgetary authority to do that. So we're bringing this to council to make sure that we are co-op, are adhering to Wisconsin Statute sixty-five oh six.
All right. Thank you. And as you saw, you know, these are mostly CIP items. I'll say there's contributing factors. It could be anything from not getting a good bid to getting billed late. It could be supply chain issues. I mean, there's all sorts of reasons. I don't know, maybe some bids might have came in under budget. I'm not really sure. So I'm sure there's many factors. But as Dave mentioned, this is one of the things he's implemented, is to make sure that we're consistent with the state statute, which does create more work in his department, but it also makes us legal. So that's always a good thing. So appreciate you taking the extra time to do that. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Our thirty-five, this one, we need a number as well, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
This is our thirty-five of twenty-twenty-four, A Resolution to Carry Forward from Twenty-Twenty-Three Budget to Twenty-Twenty-Four Budget for Some Operation.
Is there a second?
I so move.
Sorry. Was almost on a roll there.
Yep, close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. All the person Schumacher.
Similar to the last one, so that we're compliant with it, too. Ones that have, or but departments that had surpluses in that, carrying forward in there, these are all detailed within the tables attached to this.
All right. Anything you want to add to this one, Dave?
To the best of my knowledge, we've never done this for operating carryforwards. I use the same philosophy I did at all the counties I worked at. Number one, the department has to have a surplus in order to request carried forward. And then just, you know, part of the budget process isn't reasonable. So we actually had three departments that requested carryforwards. One of those three did have a deficit. I told them I wouldn't support the carryforward request, and they subsequently did rescind that one. So these are the two departments that had submitted requests, and I do support them.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one?
I guess, Dave, on the one that you didn't approve, the carryforward, do you have a reason why?
This was the department had a deficit of over a hundred thousand. And a carryforward means there's something to carry forward. They over drew their checking accounts. So how can you carry anything forward? Obviously, the council can do whatever they wish, but if they do, that's just using fund balance to do so.
Yeah. So basically, they had one line to carry over, but there are other lines that were over budget by more than that. So I think once Dave explained that to the department head, they totally understood. I met with that department head yesterday, and everything's good there.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to.
They were thinking they could carry over the one line, but if the rest of them aren't balanced, it's really not how it works.
Nope.
So it's an education process.
Nope. I just needed the explanation.
That's a good question. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Now we have an ordinance for, looks like a first reading. Is that popping up there? And this one, it came from Public Safety for a first reading. All the person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Ordinance Five of twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance to amend Section seventy dash one eighty-five, Forty-Eight Hour Parking. This is a first reading. The Public Safety Committee met on twenty-eighth of February and approved this, or recommended approval on a five-zero vote. There's, it is adding Parent Seven and Parent Eight, which is identified in the documents here showing the additional areas next to the former city hall. And is there any questions?
So as we go through to clean up the ordinances, we discovered we didn't have an ordinance or signage for these parking areas. Obviously, we don't want forty-eight hour parking there, just like everywhere else, so we can maintain the parking lots, especially in the wintertime. So these were the ones that were identified. So this would be back in two weeks. If you have any questions or concerns before the next meeting, feel free to reach out to myself, and we can address them. All right. Next item is our thirty-six of twenty-twenty-four. How would you like to handle this, Matt?
I can introduce the item, explain where we are, and then the council can decide whether it wants to continue the discussion in a closed session, or in an open session or move to closed session. Okay. You ready?
Yeah, and I do have some other things that I can put up there if need be. I have your memo, and I have a condensed version of the red line.
Okay.
And I think I have something else on the severity.
Okay.
So.
Well, let's take it one step at a time, because unfortunately, I thought I had everything pretty well in hand when I sent this resolution out with a revised agreement and the memo. But then I obtained some additional information or insight later in the day last week, Friday. And so there's a couple of other small adjustments that need to be made that you haven't seen yet. So let me start with what was in the packet. If you read the memo, if you did read the memo, then what you saw is that packet includes a revised development agreement. The change relates to the structure of the agreement in terms of the bucket of monies out of which payments on the municipal revenue obligations will be made. So backing up a little bit, you may recall that the agreement provides for the city to issue two municipal revenue obligations, one for Phase One, one for Phase Two. The principal amount of the Phase One municipal revenue obligation was calculated based on the projection of ninety-five percent of the tax increment that would be generated by Phase One. The Phase Two municipal revenue obligation was calculated based on the projection of ninety percent of the tax increment to be generated just by Phase Two. And that's how those dollar amounts were arrived at, and nothing is changing about that. So the dollar amounts for each MRO remains the same. Here's the complication. There's another section in the agreement that describes the source of money that will be used to make payments on these, both municipal revenue obligations. And the agreement that you approved on February twenty-seven said that those municipal revenue obligations would be paid out of, paid using ninety percent of all of the tax increment generated by the whole tax increment district, Phase One and Phase Two. And after that agreement was proved and sent out, approved by the council, and I did my final proofread, then the developer's attorney did his final proofread, he notified me that he wanted to change the, that second part of the agreement to say that the Phase One MRO would be paid out of the ninety-five percent of the increment from Phase One, and that ninety percent of the increment from Phase Two would be allocated to the Phase Two MRO. So what's the difference? So originally, we had one bucket of money, the whole tip. Ninety percent of that was going to pay both MROs. Now we're going to have a smaller bucket, Phase One tax increment. That money will be available to pay the Phase One MRO, and another bucket, a larger bucket, the Phase Two increment, that money will be allocated to pay the Phase Two MRO. It's a little more complicated in terms of drafting. I think it gets this both, certainly, I don't, I don't think it really changes the dynamics of this in a way that is material to the city. And actually, it's not clear to me whether, which approach is, what, the approach that is used here will be either more or less beneficial to the developer, depending how it actually plays out. If it plays out exactly as projected, then each MRO will be paid exactly as the amount's projected. If it doesn't develop exactly as projected, then it might be better for the developer to do it this new way, or it might be better to do it the way we did, you know, to have, have it the way it was approved on February twenty-seven, from the developer's standpoint. From the city's standpoint, you're still never going to pay more than the municipal revenue obligation amounts that are specified in the agreement. Those amounts are not changing. We're really just changing the bucket of money from which those payments will be made. So that, those were the changes that, that I made to the agreement that's in the packet now. I had to redefine the tax increment buckets that would, that will be made available to make payments on these. So let me stop there and ask, are there any questions about any of that? Yes.
I have a question. So let's say Phase Two, the increment isn't enough to pay the MRO, but yet there's a surplus in the Phase One. The way that it's written now, we can't use that Phase One to pay for Phase Two, if they're, if they're short in their increment.
If they're short, if the Phase Two increment is less than projected, and the Phase One increment is more than projected, then yes, STI could not come to the city and say, oh, you need to take some of that extra Phase One increment and use it to pay Phase Two. That would not be an option they would have if the revised agreement is approved.
So then what, then they, STI would have to come up with that difference?
No, they just wouldn't be paid in full. They would just, the amount that we would ultimately pay them, if, if the Phase Two increment is, falls short of what is needed to fully pay that municipal revenue obligation, they just wouldn't get fully paid. They'd only get what's available.
So what is the benefit to them by doing it this way? When you said that they, there was a benefit to them in certain circumstances?
I think, I think the reason they want to do it this way is they have high confidence that they're going to do Phase One. They want to make sure they have that full ninety-five percent of that Phase One increment available to them to pay that first MRO. And so I think that's why they're motivated to say they want to make sure that, instead of saying, well, we, we get ninety percent of everything, but we're not sure when we're going to do everything, they're saying, we really want to make sure we get ninety-five percent of Phase One. I think that's why they prefer this approach.
Clear as mud? All the person Reeves? Oh, I'm sorry.
But just to clarify, there's no real fiscal impact to the city long-term?
There, there is no impact in the sense that the amount the city is committed to pay does not change. It's just redefining the sources of funds available to make those payments in a way that, because we don't know exactly how this is going to in a way that, because we don't know exactly how this is going to play out, I can't predict exactly how that's going to play out.
It looks like Lisa has her hand up and so does Director Ellinger.
Why don't you let Director give it off first?
Go ahead, Dave. Lisa's deferring to you. And you're muted. Can't hear you, Dave.
Dave, you're muted. You need to turn your mic on.
I apologize.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. In that scenario where you just gave me, phase one has a surplus, phase two has a deficit. We're not paying STI holdings for phase two because there's not enough money available. But aren't we accruing interest on that phase two amount so it would be costing us more money?
Well, we don't have to, we don't have to pay the phase two MRO if we don't have money to, I mean, we can only make payments on it to the extent we have funds. Now, the phase two MRO will accrue interest, simple interest.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes. So it will accrue simple interest. So if there is insufficient money available to make the full principal and interest payment due in a given year, then that's true. Interest will accrue on that amount that remains unpaid that year. And that could have the effect of increasing the amount the city would ultimately have to pay. But for STI to actually receive those dollars, there would have to be enough money coming in later years to pay it. So...
Correct. But in essence, we are having higher, in that scenario, we've got a higher interest expense.
Well, but, let me back up. The city would still have the ability under the agreement in this scenario. Let's, so there's surplus phase one money, there's a deficiency of phase two money. STI could not demand that the surplus phase one money be allocated to them, to that phase two MRO. But the city would have the discretion to choose to allocate it to that if it wanted to, to avoid those, yeah. Does that make sense?
So we could avoid that problem ourselves on a discretionary basis?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, and Lisa was next.
I have a couple of questions. That was one of them. But did anything change as far as the order of who gets paid?
No, the sequence in terms of priority, that remains the same.
Okay. And then did, does Ellers have any concerns about the financial implications of this proposal?
I discussed this with Keith. He and I, I think, see the issue pretty much the same, the way I've described it. He's not concerned. When we're done talking about this issue, and I don't know if we are yet, but let me know, and then I'll update you on the next issue.
Anybody else have any questions about this part of it? Okay, we'll go to the next one.
Okay. So as I said late, at some point on Friday, I think, last week, I came to understand something that I didn't, hadn't understood previously, and that is that the, we had received cost estimates from the developer for the estimated cost of constructing the stormwater management improvements. And there's an exhibit attached to the agreement that describes those. But I thought that that cost estimate had been reviewed and approved by the city's engineering consultants, and apparently, I guess it has not yet been reviewed and approved by the city's engineering consultants. Although today, we did send them over to Strand, and I got an email today that I believe indicates that they have now looked at those cost estimates in this exhibit and now say it looks reasonable to them, although they asked a question about it. And it's my understanding that the process of reviewing and approving other cost estimates associated with phase one public improvements, that the process of reviewing those other cost estimates for things like sewer and water and streets is still underway, has not yet been completed. So my suggestion for resolving this issue is, and that we make another change that you didn't see yet. Sorry, I'm going to, and that is, there are really two things. One, in one section of the agreement that addresses the approval of surety amounts, amounts for letters of credit or performance bonds. I've modified the language, and Tim, I don't know if you have this available. It's what I sent out, but I can, if not...
I do. Just give me a moment. It's on my desktop somewhere.
If we go to section B1...
Well, Tim is looking for that. Keith, is that normal that we are trying to approve this developer's agreement without everything being gone through all the engineers and certified that way? I think, I mean, to me, it seems like, once again, we're voting on things that are incomplete, which doesn't sit very well.
Yeah. This is not unusual because typically, what a development agreement says, and it does say it here, it says, "The developer needs, after the agreement is approved, to get approval of all of the plans and specifications." And that's what this agreement says. And it anticipates that the approval of the plans and specifications and the approval of the surety amounts, that that may occur after the agreement is approved, and that is typical. What's a little different here is that I had included an exhibit that says that the parties agree that the estimated cost of the stormwater improvements is set forth on this attachment F. You can see that's the language that's stricken out there under, under letter of credit. See, there's a line through that now? And what it said before was, "The city and developer agree that the estimated cost of the stormwater management facilities serving phase one is set forth on attachment F." I thought that our engineer had approved that cost estimate when I put that sentence in, and apparently has not occurred yet, although it looks like it may have occurred as of today. So I suggest, my, I thought, well, we can solve this problem by deleting that sentence. And then I wanted to be even more careful than I had been by adding some new language above that in section K, saying, "Developers shall provide its engineers' estimate of the cost of the phase one improvements reviewed by the city's engineers. The estimated cost of the phase one improvements that shall be used for calculating the amount, the amount or amounts of required surety shall be the amounts determined by the city's engineers. Developers' engineers' estimate of the cost of the stormwater improvements is set forth on attachment F, but that amount has not yet been approved by the city's engineers." So I wanted to be very clear about that. So this says basically, you're going to, your engineers are going to provide us, the city, with your cost estimates. City engineers are going to look at that, and their decision as to the estimated cost is going to be the final decision as to required surety. And again, this is not atypical at all. It's, what's atypical is that I had that exhibit in there that said we already agree that these are the costs of the stormwater improvements. Now, there's a complicated reason why I put that in there, having to do with the process for accepting the stormwater management improvements in this agreement and reducing the surety, which I don't think I need to get into. It'll just make it even more complicated than it needs to be. So by deleting that sentence and adding that other language, I am very satisfied that you will have a very reliable process for making sure that the city engineer ultimately approves the amount of surety that is required before the developer can proceed with construction. There is another section in this agreement, or there is a language in this agreement that makes it clear that the developer cannot proceed with construction until the amount of surety and the surety has been approved and a letter of credit has been provided. So there's that change. Before, there's one more, but before we get to that one...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Now, because that hasn't been approved, and the cost could go up. So now are you actually saying that the amount of TIF that we're, we may approve may go up? And we don't even know what that now phase one TIF request is?
No, no. TIF, TIF request, the TIF amount will not change, number one. Number two, if it turns out that the costs come in less than was projected when the TIF request was analyzed, there's a look back in this agreement. So final costs will be evaluated before we issue the MRO. So if it turns out that the final cost of doing work is less than what was projected at the time the TIF was analyzed, there will be a reduction in the TIF amount.
And if it was more, then it's on the...
Correct. If it, if it turns out that it costs more, then there's no increase in the TIF amount. You may recall, we talked about that. Okay.
I know, but with the new language and all that, I just wanted to make sure that that isn't changed.
That has not changed. Now, there's another element to this, having to do with, there's a, if we scroll down, Tim, to section E4 of the agreement?
Of which agreement?
That one you have up.
Oh.
Either way.
E4 of that one?
Or E4 of the development agreement.
Yeah, okay. E4.
Yeah. We don't, you want to go, you don't want that, you want the actual agreement. Because that's your summary. I can...
Do you have it? Otherwise, I can pull it up and...
Well, I can just tell you what it is. Section E of the agreement is a list of conditions that need to be satisfied before the agreement will be effective. And one of the conditions that I had in there is that the developer would have to provide the letter of credit or other surety required for the public improvements before the agreement would even be effective. And I'm concerned about a timing problem with that because you may recall that this agreement now is drafted to say that if the agreement isn't effective, if all of these conditions are not satisfied by March 29, then this agreement terminates. And not only that, but then another agreement we have with the Department of Transportation terminates. And that's why that March 29 date is in there, because DOT said they need to know by April 1 if we have an agreement, because if we don't, then they want to do their own thing on stormwater, okay? So we have this March 29 deadline to get a bunch of conditions addressed. One of those conditions right now says developer has to provide the surety that we need. Well, they can't give us the surety till we get confirmation from the city's engineers as to what the required surety amount needs to be. In other words, as I understand it, the developer's position is, "Hey, we've provided our estimate of costs, and we're just waiting for the city to tell us that that, that it approves those estimates." Our engineers have been, developers asked that we complete that by March 22. It may or may not happen by then. I saw today that Brett Haybar had asked Strand whether it could complete that by March 22, but we don't have an answer yet. So to resolve that, I want to avoid a situation where we can't get that surety in place by the end of March, and then the whole agreement terminates, and we got a problem with DOT, and then it's a big mess. So my proposal is to delete that requirement from that as a condition. So in other words, it won't be a condition of the agreement becoming effective that they give us the surety. They still have to give the surety. It has to happen before a start date for construction will be approved. So you're going to get the surety before they can start work. And that, again, is not atypical. That is how we typically do this. So I'm going to suggest that that change also be approved. And then there, and there is then one more thing that I need to mention. I received an email this morning from the Department of Transportation, contact that I've been working with, where they asked for two relatively minor adjustments to the memorandum of agreement that you voted on and approved last meeting. And that memorandum of agreement is an exhibit to the development agreement that you approved last meeting. So I'm going to, I'm going to bring that revised memorandum of agreement back to you with the changes they requested at your March 26 meeting and ask you to consider that. And I would recommend that you approve it. The changes they made are technical language changes that do not change the substantive terms of the agreement in a, in a way that would be material to you, I don't think. But you still have to approve it at that meeting. But that's, as I say, that document is also an exhibit to this agreement. So I'd like to put the new one in here before you vote on it tonight. So with all of that being said, here's what I am going to suggest that we do tonight. I have provided, well, I will provide, and I have, I will provide to the mayor and to Candy. I'll do it right now. An agreement that includes all of the changes that I've just described, the ones that were in the packet, where we go from one bucket of TIF money to two buckets of TIF money to pay these two MROs, and where I change the language about the procedure for approving the estimated costs of the work and take that out as a condition. So I'm going to send that over. I do not yet have this new memorandum of agreement attached to it. So, but what I'm going to suggest we do is, if you could pull the resolution up that I prepared for tonight's meeting, Mayor. I'll show you what I think...
Is that the one in the packet, or is that...
That's the one that's in the packet.
It would be this one, I hope.
Yes. So here's what I'm going to ask or recommend that we do. So I'm going to send the updated revised draft of the agreement to the mayor and to the clerk. You can see this resolution refers to, under the resolution paragraph at the bottom, it says, "The common council of the city of Stoughton hereby approves the agreement to undertake development attached as attachment A, the revised agreement." So I'm going to ask that the clerk attach the one that I'm going to send right now to the resolution. That would be the agreement that will be attached to that resolution that you're voting on. And you've already seen most of that language, and I'm sending it to the mayor and the clerk. If you want to look at it again and have me review any of that language with you again, we can do that. So you would vote on this resolution, but there would be one more small change to the resolution. So it would say, "The common council of the city of Stoughton hereby approves the agreement to undertake development attached as attachment A, the revised agreement." And then add, "With a new memorandum of agreement with the Department of Transportation attached, in a form approved by the city attorney attached." And then just the rest of the sentence as it is. And then I will tomorrow provide the new memorandum of agreement to the clerk, so she's got the right exhibit. So that's my suggestion to get this done tonight. Are there any questions?
Allie Person Reeves?
On page 13, under the phase two municipal revenue obligation, it says, "Within 45 days after conditions set..." And it may be in here, I just can't find it. But I know the conditions we had set was that phase two, we have to approve the plans because at this point, they're not, we haven't really seen them, they're not set. Is that in here somewhere? I feel like it was in a previous agreement, and I can't find it.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about. If we, if we go down to section... If we, if we go down to section. Mayor, if you could pull up the agreement.
I have it up.
Section C two, Phase Two Municipal Revenue Obligation.
Page by chance?
For me, it's on page 13.
Okay.
Oh, same page?
Phase Two Municipal Revenue Obligation.
Right here. That's where Lisa was.
Yeah. And, and then it says under section B A there, "The conditions set forth in section C two A below must be satisfied before the city will be obligated to issue the Phase Two Municipal Revenue Obligation." Those are all the conditions. That includes.
That's why I couldn't find it though, so.
You seeing it now?
No.
So section C two.
You've got it there. C A, C two, A, one, two, three, four. Those are all the conditions.
Right. What is section C? I think that's the question.
Well, C is municipal revenue obligation. That's the header, municipal revenue obligations.
So I, I still don't find the part that says we have to, before we just hand over the money because it's 45 days. I, I know we talked about, we need to approve their plans for Phase Two and I can't find that.
Is that the plat?
If you look at the screen there, you see item three?
Yeah.
It says, "Developer must obtain approval of and record a plat for the subdividing lot three that conforms to the conceptual plan attached as attachment J." And then four, "Developer must obtain approval of zoning changes of the lands within lot three that conform to the land use types shown on the conceptual plan." Five, "Developer must dedicate not less than 64.92 acres of land for stormwater management and dedicate not less than 32 acres of land for park and recreation uses." And then six, they got to enter into a mutually acceptable development agreement. So that's.
So what you're saying is we have to record the plat?
Before they get a Phase Two Municipal Revenue Obligation, they have, they have to submit and obtain approval of a plat. They have to obtain approval of zoning changes.
And all that's going to go through the Plan Commission and City Council?
Correct.
Okay.
And they have to obtain approval of the park dedication. They have to, yeah, they have to obtain those. So that's, is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, well, yeah, and I, I didn't know what was entailed in the plat. I thought that was more generic, so.
The plat has all the lot lines, it has all the elevations, it has all the stormwater plants. It's, it's a big document that comes in a roll and it's, has really everything on it. It has all the easements, it has all of that. We just set the one in for Magnolia Springs, so I've been looking at that one real hard and they're, so, and the plat is reviewed by utilities, planning and public works and city attorney as well, as well as the developers look at it because they want to make sure the plat's right too, because if it's not, then it won't get signed and it won't, they won't be able to get, begin their work.
I think where the city council really has, the biggest decisions you're going to make are the zoning approvals because that's going to dictate what land uses are allowable and where.
And they have to be consistent with the comp plan amendment we did.
And with this conceptual plan that's attached to the agreement.
So it includes more than land, it's the buildings and I'm going to put in X retail or X housing or whatever.
No, it's, the level of specificity is the plat and the zoning. Okay? That's what you have to approve. Now, if you approve the zoning, let's say you say, well, yes, we approve this area zone for single-family residential, this for commercial, this for multifamily. They've got that done. There still will be additional administrative zoning reviews that come later and Plan Commission reviews that come later for specific development plans on those sites. So for example, if somebody has a commercial development on a site that you've already approved for zoning, zoned commercial, yes, there is a site plan review that goes with that, but that just goes to the Plan Commission.
Yeah, they have to meet all the zoning codes, you know, that are, the Plan Commission goes through all the landscape type things. These guys know the routine because they're on Plan Commission.
Right, so you're not, you're not going to get to approve like every little detail of, of the development, but you're going to get to approve the proposed land division, the park dedication and the zoning that applies throughout Phase Two. Once you've approved that, they've met the requirements and then they do still have to comply with your ordinances relating to the details of zoning approvals, site plans, building codes, things of that nature. Does that make sense?
It does. It just seems like it's a bit less specific than the exercise we just undertook for TIF money for, for the first phase. And I'm thinking about, you know, some of the other TIF requests that are sitting out there pending, they've been rather specific. Seems like Phase Two is a little looser about what they can put on there.
Well, that's always been the case.
Know if that, that's what I want to know if everybody's comfortable with.
Well, that's always been.
Because that's a big amount of money.
That's always been the case that, yeah, you're, you're not, you're not at this stage, even though you're approving a significant amount of TIF money for Phase Two, yeah, you don't have detailed building plans and specifications for every building that's going to go in Phase Two, like you did for the STI or Stoughton Trailers headquarters building.
Yeah, and, you know, they haven't marketed the property yet, so until they market the property, you really don't know all the specifics anyway because.
Right, but it won't come back here is what she's saying for approval. So.
The zoning and the plating will come back here, the site plan will go to Plan Commission.
Right, you will not have another chance, for example, to, to have the kind of discussion about the specific building design for buildings in Phase Two that you had for the Stoughton Trailers building in Phase One. That's true.
You can always get on Plan Commission. Just kidding, guys. I think that you guys like it there, don't you?
Well, maybe Lisa doesn't.
But you also have to trust, yeah, you, you also have to trust the council members that are on the Plan Commission. And then if there's, you know, the commissioners, if you haven't met them, you could reach out to them and, and talk to them as long as we don't violate any open meeting laws in the process. Put that disclaimer on it. But certainly you can provide them with feedback of what you feel will be important when they approve those site plans. I think they're reasonable dudes.
Well, that's maybe the problem because they're all dudes.
So, other questions?
That answers the question, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty overwhelming, isn't it? It is for us too, and I think it's been quite the process for the city attorneys, both of them, so I appreciate. I was talking to Matt like at 5:30 Friday night about some of this stuff, so he's been working late and my guess is into the weekend, but he didn't share that with me.
And I can see that one of the developers' consultants, Danielle Thompson, is on Zoom. Danielle, if you have anything that you want to say, if you think I've got anything wrong or if you think there's something more that needs to be said or understood, now would be a good time.
No, I think you covered what we had discussed and what we were expecting to see in the agreement, so I'm comfortable with the changes that you made to the agreement.
Okay. And Mayor and Candy, you both should now have the revised final development agreement that I would ask be attached as exhibit A to that resolution. And if council members want to see any of that language again, either in a redlined or clean format, we can do it now. And.
Matt, I'm just curious, I mean, because there is substantial changes.
Yep.
And we're seeing this on a fly in very small print and we don't actually have a copy, would it be beneficial to actually wait until the 26th so we actually have sufficient time to actually review it? Seems how this is probably one of the most important documents most of us will ever deal with in, as a council member. Do you guys really feel comfortable with this agreement and not been able to read a lot of the red lines and really been able to digest the information that's just been presented?
That's up to you all.
Is there any impact to anyone's timelines if we wait?
I would defer to Danielle Thompson on that.
Well, and I, and I guess I just would like to add just a couple of things in here is, is the agreement that the changes that were made were the changes that we were expecting to see as part of the agreement that was approved last time. So in terms of what was being approved or what the language that's in there, the red lines that Matt had made changes to was our understanding of what the agreement actually was approved at the last meeting. In terms of costs, you know, I would say that we've done our best to be as respectful as possible. We have provided, you know, maybe the cost didn't get transferred over to the right people at the right time, but we did provide those back in January. And so we appreciate Strand doing a quick review, so we feel like things are really on track and moving forward as expected. And I don't think that there is anything shocking that has come up or concerning that that's different from what I think we were all on pace to agree to at the last meeting. So I, I would just respectfully request that you vote to move forward if, if you're so inclined as we have conditions that we have to satisfy still by the 29th. And so we'd like to continue to move forward and work on those with the city over the next couple of weeks.
I, I guess how is us delaying the response prohibiting you from going forward with the state? I'm not concerned and besides, we didn't see, you may have thought these changes were in, but they weren't in for us to review. And so there's a difference there. I mean, just because you thought that they were in wasn't what was presented to you or presented to the city council. And so I'm just trying to be respectful of the city council and to make sure that, because you're asking for a lot of money, that our citizens and our constituents are going to be really looking at us to make sure that we did our due diligence and that's what I'm concerned about.
And, and I understand that and I, I want you to be comfortable moving forward. I think we are presenting a really great project and a really great opportunity for the city as well. And, you know, I think that one of the things to keep in mind is that we're both sharing a lot of risk, the company's sharing a lot of risk in this too and is making a lot of positive commitments to the city. And I think they're willing to do that and excited about that and excited about the project. So, so I agree, I think it's a really, it's a big decision, but the company is willing to take on a lot of risk too in this project and, and, you know, we will continue to work with you and Plan Commission for a while to make sure that this project is good for the city all around, that we bring in the right businesses, that we bring in good housing. And so it's going to have a lot of positive impact over, over the long term as well. So.
Well, I am not discrediting that at all. I just want to make sure that we collectively have done our due diligence to make sure that this paperwork in particular is, is tight and represents what we want it to say and not something that we on the fly, we don't like to make decisions on the fly and be presented with information at the last minute when we haven't had a chance to review it at least over the weekend or whatever. So this is.
Is the only other change, just out of curiosity, is the only other changes though related to us getting costs approved by the, prior to the construction starting? Because I think all of the other language that Matt was referencing was provided in the document that was sent out before the weekend. Just the cost information that we have to get approved, I think is the only difference.
Okay.
So, you know, I, even though I don't vote on this, I'm comfortable with the changes as Matt articulated, there's really no material changes for the city. You know, I've had the advantage of being able to, to watch Matt get to this point throughout the end of last weekend to today to see that. And, you know, I trust Matt has the interests, the best interest of the city in mind when he does this. That's not to say you shouldn't be able to do your due diligence. We can certainly pull up the red lines if, if you want to scrutinize it more, but I'm comfortable with the language. And I guess, you know, if anybody's not, now would be the time to say it.
Not that I'm not comfortable with it, I just haven't really had the time to reread all the changes and see how they fit together. I just don't want this to come, like Matt says, there's a lot of things, complexities in this and he has written rumors a number of times, but, I mean, if everybody else feels comfortable, it's, our heads are on the line. So, you know, if you're willing to take that, because Matt's done his job, we got to make sure that we do our job. That's all I'm saying.
All the person Jensen.
Yeah. I guess what I'd like to do is just, first of all, I, I trust Matt too, you know, I'm, I'm sure that he's done his due diligence and I agree with the mayor that I'm, I'm satisfied with that. So I, I think what I'd like to do is to make a motion to move this resolution forward, approve it as presented by Matt. And if the council's ready to do that, we can do it. Otherwise, we'll just wait until the next meeting.
All right, so there's a motion for the resolution with the changes that Matt articulated. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And I didn't, who was that?
Legaki.
Thank you. Second by Legaki. Any more discussion?
I, I still have a small question about the memorandum of understanding because that is one language piece that we haven't seen. And that when you were, we're discussing adding it on to the, the resolution, it, it sounded like if we approve it today, we're not going to see it on the 26th, or are we?
I'm going to bring it to you, you're going to vote on it on the 26th, but I can show it to you now.
Okay, great.
Let's do that.
That'd be awesome. And I think we need your mic. Thanks.
I'm going to send you the, um, new language here. Mayor, can I send this to you and have you put it up?
Yep.
Otherwise, after looking at that, then it sounds good to me.
All right. While we're waiting for that, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Did you hit send?
Not yet. I'm putting your name in here.
You want a drum roll or?
It should be on its way now. Let me just make sure it's not held up in my out basket. Okay, it's on its way, but it says it might take a few seconds here. The title of the document will be, yep, there it is, should be in your.
All right. It comes to my phone first.
DOT MOA.
They made it to my phone, so that's a good sign.
Okay.
Somebody just beeped. Where was it? What came to my phone? Come on. There it is.
So it, it's the yellow highlighted language that the DOT added? If you, whoop, wrong one.
What?
That's the development, there.
Oh, there it was. Sorry. I shared the wrong document. MOA, is it?
It's, uh, it says memorandum of agreement, yeah, there you go. That's it. Now, if you scroll down, you should see some yellow. There we go. It's the yellow text that is new.
All right, let me enlarge this. All right. Let me enlarge this.
So, like, "In accordance with applicable laws and regulations and, and they're saying this stormwater facility shall meet total suspended solids reduction in accordance with DNR and Dane County standards." We were going to do that anyway.
Yeah.
They just wanted us to put that in there.
The DNR wanted you to put that in?
The DNR added that language.
Or the DOT, I mean?
Or DOT put that in and sent it over.
Those the only two spots?
That's the only changes.
Wow, okay. That's very technical. Sweet.
That answers your question.
That fully answers my question.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Motion to adjourn by Jensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, who's the second? Butler? All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. Thank you. Have a good night.